...by the First German Baptist Church, later Ukrainian Orthodox Orthodox Church of St. Vladimir, later Congregation to Farah Israel Town and Village Synagogue, 334 East Fourteenth Street, AKA 334 to 336 East Fourteenth Street, Manhattan. The landmark site is Borough of Manhattan Tax Map Block 455.
Excuse me, can you speak louder? We can't hear you.
Okay.
Block 455, Lot 24. Gail Harris presenting.
The First German Baptist Church, located at 334 East Fourteenth Street, is a significant reminder of the evolving character of the Lower East Side and an excellent example of the Roman shield style of architecture. The church was erected in 1866 to 69 at the northern boundary of Pyjodchlawn, and on foot, German immigrants stretched from physicians and grand streets to East Fourteenth Street and from the boundary to the east river. The German presence on the Lower East Side declined throughout the last quarter of the 19th century and the first quarter of the 20th century as people of German descent either assimilated into new ways of city culture at large, moved to German neighborhoods on the Upper East Side and in the teens. They were replaced by new wave immigrants from Eastern Europe, and new communities such as Little Ukraine sprang up to replace the former Pyjodchlawn. In 1926, the First German Baptist Church building was sold to the Ukrainian Orthodox Orthodox Church of St. Vladimir. Several decades later, in 1962, the building changed hands again when Congregation to Farah Israel converted it to the Town and Village Synagogue. While the building contains many of its original architectural features, it has been subject to a few minor alter creations reflective of the change in use of the structure and the shifting character of the surrounding neighborhood. The German provenance of the building is evident by the strong round marked windows and entrances, architrained corbelled tables, and they are being characteristic of the Roman shielded design of architecture. The Ukrainian Orthodox congregation left their mark on the building by removing the spires originally had the two catalysts lighting the main day and replacing them with small unneached domes. They also added a larger dome at the top of the eighth roof where a Christian cross had once stood. Over the years, the church's stained glass windows have undergone changes, including the loss of the original tracery fence window and the doors have been twice replaced. There were also additions to the rear of the building in 1876 and 1889. Julius Bockel, circa 1832 to 1905, the building's architect, was born in Germany, arrived in New York in 1851, and established his own office by 1859. Prolific designer, he was responsible for a wide range of buildings and a variety of styles. Examples of his work are that in the Tribeca East, Soho, East Village Lower East Side, Hamilton Heights, Sugar Hill Northwest, and Greenwich Village Extension to the Star Districts. The First German Baptist Church is his only known remaining religious building. It survives today as a well-preserved and fine example of its Roman shield architecture and is a significant reminder of the rich cultural history of the Lower East Side.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we'll go to testimony, starting with Mariana Montneworth.
I am Mariana Montneworth, President of Town and Village Synagogue. T&amp;B is a kihila kadusha, a holy community, and we have served people who are Jewish and people who are not Jewish in Lower Manhattan for 65 years. T&amp;B is a modest, thriving, diverse congregation of really interesting people committed to living progressive Jewish lives in New York City. We are opposed to the landmark designation of our building for the simple reason that we have dreams for our congregation and our building. We want to improve the space we have so more people can be inspired to gather, worship, and celebrate together. We foster community, and we are an anchor on East Fourteenth Street for young adults, families, empty nesters, seniors alike. Five years ago, we began our dream. We designed a building that could house a preschool, that could provide flexible community space, that would allow for growth while honoring the history of our congregation. Our plan has always been for a synagogue that will serve the community today, tomorrow, and hopefully forever. Unfortunately, we couldn't afford to build this, so we began exploring options to help us take care of the congregation and the building that we have. Our attempts at exploration were misconstrued by local bloggers. Social media picked up misinformation and it spread widely without anyone ever fact-checking with us. As I have said, we are a community of modest means doing the best we can in an uncertain time. We don't have a media department that can quickly address communication issues. If only organizations such as the Greenwich Village Society for Historic Preservation put a portion of their energy and resources toward strengthening the communities that depend upon beautiful old buildings, we would have transformed society indeed. But honestly, I don't think they would be on the facade to the people inside. I see landmark buildings, former churches and synagogues in our area that are now museums, nightclubs, or health clubs. The facades of these buildings are restored due to the for-profit businesses that now occupy those spaces, but the communities that used to gather and worship are gone. It's my understanding that landmark designation will increase the time and expense to do necessary renovations to keep our building in good and safe repair. Grants are few and inadequate to the tasks which I believe will be required of us. I am worried that designation will hold back our ability to serve the community that depends on us every day, and I know we have a community that depends on us. Am I three minutes?
That is three, but wind up, of course, or take what you need.
My father died last week, and I just got up from Shiva this morning. If I hadn't had the loving support of the men and women of Town and Village Synagogue during one that's really been the most trying week of my life, I'm not sure I would have found the strength to be here this morning. This is kihila. Kihila, our community, needs our building in order to keep it together and keep working. So when you make your decision, please keep in mind that there is more at stake here than brick and mortar. There is the preservation of the community of New York City people to think about. If T&amp;B is to be landmarked, I do duly request that you exclude the back building from landmark designation. Thank you.
Thank you very—
For my team, I just want to acknowledge that our ally Larry Seabird is here this morning to show support, and we thank him for being here.
Okay, thank you. Welcome all. Cynthia Weber.
Good morning. I'm Cynthia Weber. I'm a 40-year member of Town and Village, and I'm also currently the co-chair of the House Committee. The structure, as you've heard from the LGC presentation, the structure that Town and Village Synagogue now occupies actually comprises two buildings built at separate times. The church structure by 1868 and the separate utilitarian three-story brick back building completed by 1889. If T&amp;B is to be landmarked, we request the exclusion of the back building for landmark designation as it differs from the church structure in visibility, separateness, scale, function, quality of architecture, and the type and quality of materials. There is precedent for the Commissioner's action and their decisions with regard to, for example, the Canal Street Lowes Theater and the Bauer Mission. T&amp;B requests the exclusion of that building to retain flexibility for its use and for possible future expansion via ADA accessibility or to house classrooms in other spaces useful to the mission and function of the synagogue. There is no plan for its further development for residential or other commercial use. As a quick calculation would show, given the small footprint of the back building and current zoning requirements, there is no space for such a development. Further, as the maximum height permitted by the current C-16A zoning is 80 feet, any new structure would likely be too short to be economical for development by others. Most important for the Commissioner's consideration of this request for exclusion is the lack of visibility of the back building from any public way, whether it be 14th Street, First Avenue, Second Avenue, Thirteenth Street. The back building is only visible to those who've been allowed to pass through the locked for security 14th Street side doors to the private east and west passageways. Whatever limited architectural value the front church structure may have, the back building has less to none. Constructed for utilitarian and domestic use, it is typical of common residential architectural design and materials of the period and is not architecturally related to the main building. Exclusion of the back building, a structure not visible to the public and not architecturally related to the church structure, will eliminate the professional and administrative costs related to consultation with LGC on back building projects. This will allow us to devote those savings directly to the preservation of our synagogue and to the continuation of its mission. One last question.
Sure.
For all the reasons presented above, if T&amp;B is to be landmarked, we request the exclusion of the back building from landmark designation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jacqueline Berkowitz.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity—
Ignore that.
I'm sorry. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. I'm Jacqueline Berkowitz, past president and current chairman of the Board of Town and Village Synagogue. First, I'd like to reserve the synagogue's right to respond to any and all new material presented today at this hearing or in correspondence to the commission. Let me describe our synagogue community. The Town and Village Synagogue was founded by returning World War II veterans and their families who came to live in Stuyvesant Town in the heart of the village. I married into the community 36 years ago. My husband's parents, original tenants of Stuyvesant Town, were members. My husband grew up in the synagogue and attended his Hebrew school. I married into his beautiful villa apartment, and our children grew up here. One child even attended the Hebrew school. I have hopes of the next generation. Our synagogue building was first a German Baptist church, then the Ukrainian church, and since 1963, a conservative synagogue. Each new faith community adapted and changed the face and structure of the building, removing steeples and replacing them with domes. Stained glass windows were altered, decorative crosses were replaced with Jewish stars. All alterations that are representative of the worshippers within and reflective of the changing neighborhood. The German Baptists are gone from East Fourteenth Street. The Ukrainian Orthodox are gone from East Fourteenth Street. We aren't here on East Fourteenth Street for 15 years, and we plan to stay. My college recently changed its motto to "Never fear change." What a great mantra for us at 334 East Fourteenth Street today. Preserve for us the opportunity to change, to grow, to serve our members, and to thrive between, behind, and within these walls. Each new program and outreach, whether to the 30s and 40s who pack our social ownership up in, their numbers limited only by our limited space, to young families with babies who want a Jewish nursery school for which we have no room, to the Russian Jewish community, to our Gaiim, the village, our own LGBTQ community, and to our learning enrichment program for seniors, some of whom are founding members, and all of whom come to a building with limited ADA accessibility. Allow us to grow, to adapt, to change with, and to serve our diverse Jewish constituencies. And for all the reasons presented above by myself and by others and by the speaker behind me, if T&amp;B is to be landmarked, we request the exclusion of the back building from landmark designation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Esther Schwab, please.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Esther Schwab, Executive Director of Town and Village Synagogue. T&amp;B has a responsibility to its membership, which includes maintaining a safe, functioning, and habitable building for all worshippers, visitors, students, and caretakers who live in the back building and the family. In our role as owner and steward, we must immediately address the structural integrity of the building, which has been compromised by decades of vibration from the subway line that runs directly beneath us and over 140 years of water and unnatural elements penetrating the stone and brick facade, stained glass windows, roof and basement joint structure. These are urgent repairs that we intend to undertake as soon as we have them available. While we understand our current community represents one story in the city's dynamic democratic and cultural narrative, we do not feel that the building itself is worthy of landmark designation. Its facade was modified substantially when in 1920, the Ukrainian church removed or truncated the elegant church steeple that had defined the shape of the original German Baptist church and then replaced them with concrete bricks. Additional modifications were made to the windows and to church interior at its time. This story of the city's changing population, particularly in Lower Manhattan, has been told many times before and with other more worthy historic structures that possess much greater integrity than ours. Its Mishmashal styles, while interesting, it's not architecturally significant in its own right. We ask that you do not designate our building. However, if you do choose to designate upon sanctuary structure, we urge you to exclude that building from designation as Cynthia already described. Today, we have been compassionate stewards of our home and would continue to be so even without landmark designation. T&amp;B would be able to use the money saved toward the direct preservation of our home and its continued mission. Extensive and costly engineering investigations of the exterior and interior of both buildings document their degradation over the past 140 years of use. We face renovation costs inside and out in excess of $1.3 million. Repairing facades, stonework, and stained glass will cost us $425 million, $425 million—
Thousand.
Thousand dollars. I can't hear.
Whatever.
Anyway, this does not include the insurance we have to spend to meet our current future performance just for repair and maintain the building. We don't have $1 million for even the repair, though we're actively looking for it, looking to raise it. We're not a lucky community, and the grants that may be available to us should be, should be landmarked, are nowhere near ready. We've seen some of the letters advocating support for landmarking of our synagogue, particularly from the Greenwich Village Society for Preservation, and others who are not affiliated to this community. I too am a lover of historic architecture. As an urban planner in my previous career and as past president of the historic synagogue in Brooklyn, I appreciate the importance of preserving our collective heritage, which may sometimes be embodied in significant historic and cultural landmarks. But I also understand the balance required in such decisions and the hard financial reality of such a designation to a modest congregation's architecture. Greenwich Village GHP and other landmark advocates here have every right to make their case to you, but they are not the real parties of interest here. We are, and we will be greatly affected by this decision. However, if all the advocates for landmarking are truly concerned with the preservation of our building as it is now, we welcome their support, whether financially or prospectively. Members, join us in our efforts to maintain and upgrade our synagogue. We want a building that we can all use now and in the future. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Teri Cook, please, and then Jean Standish after Ms. Cook.
My name is Teri Cook, and I live on Fourteenth Street, and I've lived there for almost 40 years. I live in Stuyvesant Town complex, which I'm sure all of you will know about. I live one block away from the historic building that houses the Town and Village Congregation. I walk by that building at least twice a day, sometimes with my neighbors, and find that people are very aware of the building's importance because so little of the street's East Side older buildings have been left for us. So it matters not what our spiritual beliefs are, for the synagogue is a part, really, of all of us and part of our heritage, and it holds the history and the story of early ancestors who not only utilized the space for sacred rituals, but also as a social and cultural center. And that tradition continues today. The present congregation has played host to an intimate concert that was very well-attended by the community. And my favorite was in 2003, when they introduced Shallow Ireland and invited the congregation in. It was packed to the rafters, and of course, it was in honor of St. Patrick's Day, so everyone who studied in town turned out. But it is a very generous thing, very generous function to them.
Hope it ended peacefully.
This building initially by the original German Anabaptist Christian ministry, passed on to the Ukrainian Orthodox, and finally to the current Jewish congregation, who somehow got it counted in 1969. This is what we've all talked about, quite a feat for a small building on Fourteenth Street to be considered alongside the huge landmarks that were known today. I believe that the former congregation knew that the building told our neighborhood's story and needed to be preserved as an important part of urban planning, but also to keep it from disappearing. With all of the new construction that is now being planned on Fourteenth Street, from First Avenue to Avenue B, my neighbors all agree with me that the synagogue needs to be officially recognized as part of our neighborhood heritage. So I come today to encourage you to approve the building as a landmark, as was the original plan in 1969, and I thank you for your time and your service.
Okay, thank you very much. Jean Standish, and then William Hoobsh.
My name is Jean Standish, and I give testimony on the Council of Lower East Side Preservation Initiative to strongly support individual landmark designation of the Tipperary Israel Town and Village Synagogue Building at 334 East Fourteenth Street, Manhattan. The building has striking and robust architectural design and a very strong presence on the street. Its freedom blessed the area of old buildings and the ravine street, over the last century and a half, and thereby shows as an important historical marker for the Lower East Side community. The Tipperary Israel Town and Village Synagogue Building was originally built in 1866 as a German Baptist church, often the avatar of the Lower East Side Pyjodchlawn neighborhood. The structure would have visually dominated the surrounding street state from its first construction, yet it continues to have such a strong presence today, speaks largely to the building's architectural character and to its continuing prominent role in the life of our community. The building's transformation over time, from its original use as a German Baptist church to its conversion to the Ukrainian Orthodox Church in 1926, while it is with present use as Tipperary Israel Town and Village Synagogue, can be traced in the subtle changes in the building's facade, most notably with the replacement of steeples with sunken domes in the early 20th century and the introduction of the star David motif in the window during the late 20th century. The building has historically played and continues to play an important role in the life of the Lower East Side community, and we believe it is essential that the building survives for future generations to appreciate and enjoy. Its importance was recognized by the Landmark Preservation Commission in 1956 when it counted the property. We applaud and we commend the commission's recent scheduling of a public building and respectfully request that the commission act designate the building as individual landmark as the earliest opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. William Hoobsh, Hoibsh, pronunciation. Then Andrea Goldwyn, next.
Good morning, thank you. My name is William Hoobsh.
Yes.
I'm a resident, president of Iverson Town for the past 35 years, a member of the congregation for the past 35 years, a past president, and I'm here to speak today as an individual member of the community and what this synagogue means to the community and to the city as a whole. I have a special appreciation for the work the community has done to enhance New York's lives, because my mother, plus a memory, was a history teacher. Every family vacation included a visit to one historic side museum and reading historical markers. Being able to see and feel the history of the better place added immeasurably to what I had read about in textbooks. The work of the Landmark Preservation Committee has followed this tradition of enrichment, and I thank you for your dedication and perseverance in pursuing this excellence. In spite of my love and appreciation for history and preservation, however, I believe that this building does not merit preservation. It is old, but it is not worth it for its beauty or as a part of history. Moment the commission developed 500 buildings in New York City to catalog scriptures of architectural, artistic, or visual excellence, 334 East Fourteenth Street is not included, perhaps because the architect who designed it is most noted for being prolific, not for being innovative, or for that matter, all that impressive. Even today, the most striking features are the main doors, the semicircular glass panels above, and the office entry on the west side of the building. Both of these were the result of renovation projects within the past 30 years and have little resemblance in the entryways they replaced. By that measure, then, the building does not even qualify as old, nor is the building part of the Lower East Side immigration experience. The immigrant experience of place almost entirely below Houston Street certainly gives my immigrant ancestors several generations ago. When they crossed Houston Street, whether it was uptown Manhattan, the outer boroughs, or out of New York City, they were no longer immigrants. They were assimilated Americans who would distance themselves from new immigrants in order to raise their American families. Their immigrant status arrived and ended before they arrived at this site. As stated on your website, the landmark must possess a special character, a special historical or aesthetic interest or value as part of the development, heritage, or cultural characteristics of the city, state, or nation. This site has none of those characteristics. These are not trivialized or fine work being done in the past. I thank you for your work, staff, and 334 East Fourteenth.
Okay, thank you. Andrea Goldwyn, and then Marcia Hadad-Zumopolis.
Good morning, Chair, Chair, and Commissioners. I'm Andrea Goldwyn, speaking on behalf of the New York Landmarks Conservancy. The Conservancy supports designation of the First German Baptist Church, now Congregation to Farah Israel Town and Village Synagogue, as an individual landmark. We believe this building merits designation for both its rich history and its distinguished architecture. Congregation to Farah Israel, the Town and Village Synagogue, is a fine example of German-American vernacular, Roman shield design. The second congregation to occupy the building, the Ukrainian Orthodox Church, replaced earlier spires with small wooden domes sometime after 1936. The present congregation purchased the building in 1962, but the Germanic style and Moorish ornament suggests the appearance of a building that could have been a synagogue all along. Its architecturally lively and significant influence was first proposed for designation in 1936. in 1960, and have languished in designation until ever since. We applaud the commission for moving forward with the designation as an important historic sacred site. The synagogue is among the highlights of the Conservancy's Manhattan Synagogue survey in 2010. At the time, our staff met with synagogue representatives and discussed their hopes to expand the facility to accommodate additional programming and their wish list of restoration needs, such as restoring the popper domes or the leaded glass windows on the Fourteenth Street facade. The LPC designation is followed by the synagogue for matching rents on the employees or other exterior restoration projects, and will look forward to speaking with members of the congregation in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Marcia Hadad-Zumopolis will help me on that. And Amanda Davis will be next after that.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Since this is Greek Independence Day, I'm going to give a fast lesson in pronunciation.
Okay, please.
Ikotopolis.
That's close enough. Not quite. Thank you.
I'll be intimidated if I will be yours. I am very proud to be the museum director of the last Synagogue, finally known as the Greek Synagogue, and two eighth of mystery, which in your wisdom, you designated as a New York City landmark in 2002. I'm here speaking not only as someone who is very active in my synagogue, but as someone who is very sympathetic to the fact of what happens in many congregations for financial reasons, dwindling population, the need to either expand or to repair. I am speaking here adamantly in support of landmark designation, the Parrot Israel, not only because of its magnificent building, because honestly, the comments that I've heard in opposition are in complete opposition to what happened with us. If you would have entered our building fifteen years ago, the plaster was peeling off the walls, the tiles were coming down, our congregation had dwindled, it was so hard to get a choir or a lily on Saturday. So many people were saying, why don't you just close your doors, go away, have hundreds of synagogues on the Lower East Side. We didn't. We're stuck. We stayed open. Through the braces, the people came to our doors through landmark designation primarily. We now are a jewel on the Lower East Side. Talking about a nondescript architect, by the way, Alfred Alk, who was the architect of our building, we were the height of his career. So, we're not going to hide the narrative of that building. This was Alfred's bit of conversation. It's a small tenement synagogue, it's tall, it's a tiny size of a tenement. We are a jewel now on the Lower East Side. I encourage you all to come see us to see that your landmarking work has done. Because of our landmarking, we see much progress, we receive substantial requests, all of a sudden, people realize the importance of saving our building. You can do marvelous things within the interior as long as you don't do anything to change the architectural integrity of the building. We, of course, were on the page, we didn't want to change anything. We wanted it to look exactly as it looked in 1927 when it opened its doors. We even had discussions about, should we clean up the benches and make them look new? No. We're proud of our building. We're proud of our history. And we are so proud of all the people who come and see us. There is so much that can be done in Parrot Israel. I really strongly advocate the landmarking of this precious synagogue, so that they can accomplish what they wish to accomplish under the guidelines of landmarks. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Amanda Davis and Jeannie Engelbach, next.
Amanda Davis, speaking on behalf of the Greenwich Village Historic and Historic Preservation. GDSHP strongly supports the proposed designation of the Parrot Israel Town and Village Synagogue as a New York City landmark. Also, for our work in the community, we are aware of at least 153 letters in support of designations that have been emailed to the LPC. This 148-year-old passive worship is a distinctive building that is also a living encapsulation of the Lower East Side's immigrant histories. As you are well aware, the LPC heard of the building in 1966, but a vote never taken. We are thrilled it is now receiving the attention it deserves. The stately stone building has the commanding presence on its broad downtown street, called a "pure gingerbread Romanesque" by David Delmaw. The structure was built in 1866 with the first German Baptist church at the edge of Main Dorset. And for the sake of time, the district.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Fast forward to 1962, we had one of the Town and Village Synagogue buildings, and the Christian-themed stained glass was removed, though the onion domes remain, and serves a reminder of congregation paths. The mid-century flourishing of nearby Stuyvesant Town Peter Cooper Village, as well as the neighborhood generally, has been a major force to support the congregation through the Pushtun Day. Should the building be razed, the East Village will lose both a tangible reminder of its rich history, as well as the grand and civilized presence on a stretch of Fourth Street with a few examples of uplifting works of design. Given that its architecturally and culturally unique German Baptist, Ukrainian Orthodox, and American Jewish heritage has been waiting for forty-eight years to consider the landmark, we ask that the Landmark Preservation Commission give us a recognition of this building. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jeannie Engelbach, and then Kirsten Theodas, please.
Hi, my name is Jeannie Engelbach. I live in New York City because my parents' stuff and the sun and the synagogue are purely lotion. Anyway, I live on the second floor of 333 East Fourteenth Street. My nine building is directly at the Stuyvesant Synagogue, it's the first and I see at night, and the last thing I see at night, and it is the pinnacle of our neighborhood. There aren't a lot of neighborhoods on the Fourteenth Street, and three hundred blocks of East Fourteenth Street is truly a neighborhood. The building is the center of that, it has community services, but the size of it, it's just a really beautiful building. And in a post-9/11 neighborhood, where the firehouse is only two buildings away, people used to stop and take pictures of the firehouse all the time. But I've noticed that now people stop and take pictures of the synagogue, and a day doesn't go by without someone like our side of the block photographing this beautiful building. Anyway, I don't know anything about the inside, I'm just speaking purely on the visual bit. And as the East Village tends to rub out and extinguish all that made it vital in the past, this building is so much more important, and I believe it's going to make a lot of sense.
Okay, thank you very much. Kirsten Theodas, Estelle Stam, next.
Good morning, my fellow New Yorkers. My name is Kirsten Theodas, and I live across the street from the Town and Village Synagogue since 2008, and my husband has been living there since 2000. When I heard that the Town and Village Synagogue was built in 1866 and not protected under landmark status, I decided to do some research. All the buildings that have achieved landmark status possess, quote, "a special character and a special historical and aesthetic interest and value as part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of New York City." To my children and me, the Town and Village Synagogue looks like a castle, and there's nothing like it in a neighborhood. Since the synagogue has been built, it has served three different religious congregations, which is reflected on the building's exterior, and truly makes it a house of worship. To me, this is a physical representation of a cultural diversity in New York City. Julius Bochel, the architect who designed the Town and Village Synagogue, while he isn't as well-known as other prominent architects, who designed large, majestic, ornate churches, he was a very prolific architect. He designed stores, factories, and tenement buildings, all pillars of everyday life within a community. As mentioned in the opening statement, Bochel designs and/or altered residential and commercial buildings are included in four landmark historic districts. He is responsible for two buildings in Tribeca East Historic District, six rowhouses in Hamilton Heights Sugar Hill Northwest Historic Districts, seven tenements in the Village Historic District Extension Two, and nine buildings in the East Village Lower East Side Historic District. The Town and Village Synagogue meets the same landmark criteria as Bochel's other landmark buildings. Over the weekend, when I began to write my testimony, I watched again in period 1865 to 1898 in Ken Burns documentary on New York. I want to refresh my memory on New York in the second half of the 19th century. This is the time when the Town and Village Synagogue was built, and Central Park, Brooklyn Bridge, and electrocable car service emerged and transformed the city forever. There was one quotation that really struck me that was printed in Harper's Monthly in 1886, quote, "New York is notoriously the largest and least loved city of, excuse me, and least loved of any of our great cities. Why should it be loved as a city? It is never the same city for a dozen years altogether. A man born forty years ago finds nothing, absolutely nothing, of the New York he knew. If he chances to stumble upon a few old houses not yet leveled, he is fortunate, but the landmarks, the objects which mark the city to him as a city, are gone." This fear of New York City becoming unrecognizable from its history is still an important issue 158 years later, but today, we have the chance to preserve a piece of cultural, historic past by granting the Town and Village Synagogue landmark designation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Estelle Stam, and Virginia Liebowitz, next. Thank you.
I also am speaking from a emotional level.
Sure.
I personally think that the building is very important historically from the tourist traffic that comes across Fourteenth Street. The tourists seem to think so, too. This is a very, very, very photograph building. I, by the way, live right across the street at 333 East Fourteenth Street and have for thirty-five years, and this building has served as an anchor to the block and an anchor to the community. The history of the building is very, very, very important, I believe, and is part of why it should be landmark, not why it shouldn't be landmark. The changes are really a demonstration of what the diversity of the community has been, and it's one of the few things that's left that really memorializes that. The, there's one thing that's troubled me about the testimony from people who are affiliated with the synagogue, and that's that it's represented as a community resource. And the synagogue never reached out to the community for financial support or a support of any other kind in order to help them with the financial problems that they've had. They have all of Stuyvesant Town, which has become wealthy, they have a wealthy, or a much wealthier Lower East Side to draw from, and there were no needings that they requested from the community to help them put their point of view across and to help the community put its point of view across. And I'm happy that it landed here, where those of you who understand everything can make a reasoned decision. The request for not landmarking the rear of the building seems to me to be reasonable if, in fact, the zoning height regulations are maintained, so that when one looks at the facade of the building, there's not something sticking up that ruins what has become a beautiful and much-loved facade in the, in the community. That's all I have to say, and I thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. And Virginia Liebowitz?
I'll begin with the state.
Okay, thank you very much. And here's a name I cannot read, seventy, and I won't try, 70 East 10th Street, please?
Terri Camilla.
Okay, please. And then Leo Blackman will be next. Thank you. Sure.
Thank you, Commissioners. For both past and present, efforts of your work have for the last fifty years.
Just put your name, state your name for the record, please.
I'm Terri Camilla.
Okay, good.
It's important to have hard work of the members of this commission, past and present, because so many important places in this city have been preserved for generations to come. The challenge here is that the building that houses Town and Village is not worthy of your esteemed designation. An internet search for the architect of buildings prolific, not acclaimed, not rewarded, not of what any meritorious, nothing. It's not worthy of your efforts. While the building may have sentimental value to some, perhaps like that 1970s leadership we all have, it's your obligation, honorable Commissioners, to make the hard decision, make the right decision. Just because it has sentimental value doesn't mean it's worthy of your esteemed label. The information sheet produced by the staff describes a building that's had minor renovations. Really, it's hard to believe that the staff of landmarks would have ever approved alterations as extensive as the ones that were made, removing steeple, adding onion domes, et cetera. The most compelling argument is that the building's been calendered since 1966. If it was a compelling choice, it would have happened already, as it has for St. Patrick's, landmarked in 1966. St. Bar Thalimus, landmarked in 1967. Trinity Church, et cetera. It's not worthy of the buildings that would be its company. I also, in response to what's been said by New York Landmarks Sacred Sites Conservancy, I just want to point out that St. Patrick's Cathedral was recently renovated at a cost of $175 million. That's over $3,181 a square foot. It's not that far off in age, it's probably better maintained than this building, and I think it's important to recognize the real financial hardships that come with many of these landmark designations. The Sacred Sites reports that it gave away $7.8 million. Unfortunately, that's to 700 congregations, which works out to an average rent amount of $12,000 a grand. That's four square feet of St. Patrick's. With that, I will leave you with my testimony, which is a little.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you very much. Leo Blackman, and Rabbi Iris Richmond, next.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Leo Blackman, I'm a preservation architect, and I've lived at Fourth Street and Second Avenue for thirty years, which is definitely that's four and a half blocks from where my grandfather, Rabbi Delik, has been. So my home has actually been a neighbor for a long time. I'm here to testify in favor of 334 East Fourteenth Street, the German Baptist, Ukrainian Orthodox, Conservative synagogue. I think the mashup of faiths and the mine of reputations that each has made to this building is one of the things that makes it truly notable. There's no doubt about the significance of this structure historically, because it proves, provides evidence of the subsequent waves of integration on the Lower East Side, or architecturally, because the grand scale limestone reminiscent architecture may be unique in New York City. And by the way, just because I actually have designed a building that's now landmarked, I would hate to be dissed, you know, for not being an eminent enough architect beyond fifty years, just for the record. So, as a longtime neighbor, I feel a real attachment to this building, as an old and familiar face along Fourteenth Street, very much has been destroyed. And as an architect, it works primarily with historic schools and churches. I spent the last fifteen years with religious clients adapting their landmark facilities. It's not particularly difficult to do or more expensive, and the LPC does allow change. It makes me actually, again, a little bit crazy about aligning institutions that don't really know about this process but are hysterical about it beforehand. I don't understand why groups that talk at length and lovingly about their history seem so resistant to the idea of preserving it and formalizing their stewardship. So, Town and Village, my peeps, I would say stop fetching.
Rabbi Iris Richmond, and then Carolyn Mazurick.
Good morning. Rabbi Iris Richmond, I'd like to speak against that fetching first, annoying actions, because we're not going to fetching with Leo Arch. I have three points I'd like to address.
Sure.
First of all, we've heard a lot about the animal two cities of the city. It seems to be something that we're all coming to recognize as an ongoing problem. It appears that this applies to landmark just as equally, and you've heard some compelling testimony that the difference between a congregation such as St. Patrick's, where there are resources that enable it to devote over $3,100 a square foot to repair and restoration, in the landmark sense, whereas you've been told by certain other testimony here that we couldn't even raise the money for basic work that we needed to have done to the building. In fact, integral to the history of this congregation is the fact that it was first acquired in the 1960s by congregants who were worshiping in a space over at a store who raised the money to be able to acquire this building literally a quarter and a dollar at a time. This is part of the, of the investment of this congregation, this building, and is something that they take very seriously, and I'm very concerned about in terms of the inherent heritage of this building. In fact, integral to the history of this congregation is the fact that it was first acquired in the 1960s by congregants who were worshipping in a space over a liquor store who raised the money to be able to acquire this building literally a quarter and a dollar at a time. This is part of the investment into this congregation, this building, and is something that they take very seriously and are very concerned about in terms of the inherent cost of increase. And to speak to the woman who came to tell us that the other congregation and the fact that it didn't do them any harm, I was able to look it up while I was sitting here to see exactly what is the story with that congregation, what has transpired for them since 2002. And Wikipedia reports, I'm assuming that it's ag, but they have science for it, that, quote, "Although the community has steadily dwindled since its pre-working day, services still handle on Shabbat and Jewish holidays. While it maintains mailing of at least 3,000 persons, it often has difficulty meeting the minyan for Shabbat worship." So, minyan is 10 people. What it tells me is a significant, significant impact for congregations such as ours, which reaches out to all aspects of all communities, from young to old, of all types, diversity, ethnic, racial groups, sexual persuasions, everyone, and it needs the ability to be able to continue to do that. Second, the other main point I'd like to address is what is the building notable for? We've heard a lot of testimony about the spires that were there that had crosses and onion domes, and the question of special character. I would submit to you that the special character of this building is change. That it's not that it's nonfixed landmark that hasn't changed, that it's a special quality of diversity in New York and the ability to allow it to change with the needs of the community are exactly what makes it special and is represented in the people that are here today testifying against landmarking, and that it's exactly that diversity that should be encouraged and supported by this commission. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Carolyn Mazurick.
I actually did pass a testimony.
You're passing? Okay. And how about Leonard Mazurick? No? Okay. Got you though, recorded as in favor. Thank you. And Sarah Romanowski?
Good morning, Sarah Mathi, the Presbyterian College of the New York City Council. How can the LPC, um, speaking, put our strong support to the local establishment, charge of their own building as a New York City landmark? As near this building, thus with its perennial designation of this well-capped structure with its ancient architectural remnants overdue, today I ask you to consider the intent of the early landmark commission, not further, that's incredibly important, building, charge of your own body and development and social and cultural history of the East Village of New York City as it relates closely to ways of immigration and the mid-century housing development of the town of Peter Cooper Village. LPC hopes a special building to be preserved and preserved through the New York City. This building has been reported for construction in 1910, because of its 14th Street, especially near this location, we're going to be undergoing intensive rebuilding, altering the way it behaves, just while walking in the synagogue. We are here to make this building a landmark to protect a remarkable structure among its development soon, in honor of its ongoing contributions of the religious and cultural contribution to the East Village. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Barbara Zay.
Good morning, Barbara Zay, the Chicago Parks Department. Every building in New York has a story to tell. The structure of 334 East Fourteenth Street is unique in that it tells so many stories of so many people in just a brief glance, showing the layers of history and ways of residence in the East Village. The first German Baptist church founded in 1846 at Stanton and Essex Streets, followed its congregants north, and in 1866, prior to Lisa Beckholdt, designed a new church. The Romanesque style was popular for church buildings at the time. German Protestant churches, though, set themselves apart from Catholic churches with a simpler version of the style on a less imposing scale, as you can see here. 60 years later, the Ukrainian church made its home on 334 East Fourteenth Street. Reflecting the roots of this congregation, hair or mud-shaped domes were added in place of the original spires. This Ukrainian baroque feature, more elongated than the onion-shaped domes of Russian churches, was fitting for a church that was not under the episcopistic jurisdiction of the Moscow Patriarchy. St. Balaud Mary's congregation moved to the Upper West Side in 1962, and congregation to the Farith Israel purchased the property. Founded in 1949 for Jewish residents in the newly-conserved sides of Town and Peter Cooper Village, the congregation had met in a variety of locations before making permanent home there. Like the prior worshippers, the congregation kept most of the 1866 structure intact while adding something to reflect its background, a stained glass window featuring a star date. LPC urges the commissioners to landmark architecturally and culturally important structures that have been modeled in the East Village.
Okay. Thank you very much. And before I call you Ross, any other testimony? The people haven't signed up. Then I'm going to read a letter from Councilmember Rosie Mendez and State Senator Brad Hoileman. Thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony today about this matter. We again want to thank the LPC for your continued effort to identify and designate so many notable buildings in our community. We are very pleased the Town and Village Farith Israel synagogue is being considered for landmark designation. We appreciate LPC's work to preserve the history of the Lower East Side and the surrounding community. And I'll jump through a little bit of the history erected in 1866, things that we've heard here today that are in our presentation and our report. Town and Village Synagogue congregation moved into the building in '62 and has remained at that location, serving the community until today, the present day. The minor modifications made to the building in its nearly 150-year history by the different religious institutions it has served reflect the demographic evolution of the surrounding neighborhood. In recent weeks, during a tour of Town and Village Synagogue by Councilmember Rosie Mendez, it was brought to our attention that the location at 334 East 14th has two buildings on its lot. The front building is the original congregation space erected in 1866. The building in the back was built approximately 20 years later as a residence for clergy. The rear building cannot be viewed from 13th and 14th Street and is surrounded on all sides by other buildings. Only the synagogue's 13th Street neighbors can view the rear building when they go to the rear of their building. Based on the aforementioned, we would like to ask LPC to only consider landmarking the original front of the building. We appreciate LPC's time and consideration. Thank you again for the opportunity to submit testimony. And that will go into the record, of course. And Ross Moskowitz now.
Chairman, Commissioner Ross Moskowitz, I'm the listed attorney at State Department and advisor to the Land Spiritual to the Town and Village Synagogue. And then for the time, I apologize for being late. You have a testimony for you, and you well know, you've heard much testimony, I've heard most of it, you've heard much testimony from the congregants, the stakeholders, the stewards of T and D, and their desire not to be landmarked, but indeed to be landmarked, not to have the back building, echoed by Councilmember Mendez. On the other hand, you've heard a lot of testimony, interestingly enough, not discussing the back building, sort of a all or nothing, no discussion about the merits of the back building, from those who are not stakeholders but who are interested parties. That's a tough challenge for the commission, and we would hope that you hear and respect the true stakeholders of this property, those who actually live and breathe in this property, and give them the credit like you give other owners of property, give them the diligence, give them the true respect of their property, while taking into account the other comments made by the other testimony. That testimony is not to be dismissed, but it needs to be taken in context, context of the arrogant trust, the outsider's interest, with those who live and breathe in there. And we would ask you to respect that, to diligently listen to that, and to take that into account. We appreciate everything you've done, appreciate the staff for leading religiously, not intended with the congregation, and really looking at this issue as you should. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And with that, we're going to keep the record open for 30 days, as has been alluded to here, for any other submissions. And thank everyone for being here to participate in this and let us hear your views. And we'll close the hearing for today. With a motion and a second, without objection, the hearing is closed. Thank you very much.